Good evening and welcome to the January 22nd meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. First, I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, could we rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
So we have an item that was on last meeting's agenda that I would like to move up. I don't think that there are any butters here, but we do want to take this out of order. Could I have a motion to move up Agenda Item 3D?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So we have a petition from National Grid for a pole and wire location on Leicester Street. And is there a motion to reopen the hearing?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there a representative from National Grid?
Yeah, my name is Javier Morales.
Okay.
From National Grid.
Okay. And could you just tell us a little bit about the petition?
Yeah, sure.
Where it is and how it'll affect the area?
I would like to request the installation of one pole on intersection of Leicester Street and Miriam Street for an upgrade that we're doing in the area. And it would be across from existing Pole 39.
Okay, so there's no additional equipment being installed? It's just a relocation of a pole for upgrade?
No, this is a brand-new pole installation.
Brand-new pole? So it's going to be an addition too?
Yeah, new location. And there would be some wires coming from the existing pole across the street.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Are there any guide wires going on anyone's property?
Should be all in a public way.
Okay. And I see in our packet that there were 11 butters notified. Sharon, can you just confirm that all the butters were notified? Okay. Are there any butters in attendance? Is there anyone concerned about this who wants to speak to it? Seeing none, do you have anything else to add?
No, that would be it.
Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there a discussion regarding the application? A motion regarding the application? Is there a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
Now, if I could have a motion to move up Agenda Items A, B, and C together?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So I'll now take up Agenda Items A, B, and C, which is an acknowledgment of retiring fire rescue member Donald Kontois and Gary Almstrom, recognition of Lieutenant Adam Rivers and firefighter Stephen Lemieux for the fire ground survival training, and a swearing-in of new firefighter EMT Thomas Briggs.
As a point of aware, Madam Chair, were there any public comments tonight?
I did not see any.
I'll get it, Chair. I just want to be sure that we...
There is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Chief. Welcome. Big night for the Fire Department tonight.
It is.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you tonight. We have several items on the agenda, as you know, that I wanted to present and make you aware of. The first thing that I wanted to brief you on tonight was that over the past year, our department has been training on new fire ground survival techniques that was designed by the International Association of Firefighters. This 30-hour program is a combination of six hours of online training coupled with 24 hours of practical, hands-on training. In 2016, we sent two members of our training division, Lieutenant Adam Rivers and firefighter Stephen Lemire, who are in the audience with us this evening, to afford day, train the trainer program held at the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy, where they became credentialed to teach this program to our members. The Deputy Chief and I made a commitment that we would support this important training initiative throughout 2017, and we made the program mandatory for all department members to complete. As part of the program, we were given design schematics for certain props that needed to be constructed in order to complete the course. So Lieutenant Rivers and firefighter Lemire, they took several months constructing and painting those props in preparation for the training program. In 2017, the department was split in half, and half the department attended the program in April, and the other half completed the program in October. Lieutenant Rivers and firefighter Lemire put in close to 100 hours each in preparation in prep time and instruction of this program. And as of today, I'm very pleased and proud to announce that, as of today, we are the only department in the state that has 100% of its members completing the IFF Fire Ground Survival Training Program. It was an outstanding training opportunity for all members of our department, and it was enhanced by the dedication and the work of Lieutenant Rivers and firefighter Lemire. For anyone that knows these two gentlemen, their passion for training and education is second to none, and that was evident throughout this program. Myself, the deputy, and all members of the department would like to thank these two members for all of their efforts over this past year in 2017 for this training endeavor. I think all of our bruises, including mine, are just beginning to heal, but it was an outstanding training opportunity, and I thought it important, not only that the board had an opportunity to hear about this program, but the community as well. So, thank you. And again, they are here this evening.
Chief, could you just ask them, they're probably shy, but to go up to the podium just so they can be recognized?
Firefighter Lemire up to the podium.
Look at that thrilled face.
Adam Chair, if you haven't recognized by now, I have a very shy bunch that never likes to go to that podium.
I know you do.
Well, if the chairman hadn't asked, I was going to.
So, you know, if anyone follows the Auburn Fire Rescue Facebook page, we see just what a busy department it is, how hard you guys are all working, but the chief never, you know, never misses an opportunity for continued training. So congratulations to you both. We truly appreciate what you do each and every day.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything?
I think that the program is anything that it was when before I left, and this is probably one of the better ones that there have been, and the both of them have done a great job while I was there, and I can imagine this was only a better one. With me retiring, you've got new guys coming on, and you're training the guys now, and it's a good feeling to see that the traditions of the Auburn Fire Department maintain themselves and exceed in most cases. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Almstrom.
Thank you for your comments.
Chief?
Madam Chair, the next item that I wanted to bring to your attention was the department has had and will have two retirements. One of them occurred last week on Tuesday, and the other will occur on February 2nd, 2017. Firefighter EMT Donald Kontois's last day in the station was this past Tuesday, January 16th, 2017. We held a small open house at the station. Many of you were able to come, and we appreciate that. Mr. Kontois has retired after serving the department and the town of Auburn for 41 years. Don joined the department as an auxiliary firefighter in October of 1976 and was appointed a call firefighter in July of 1979. He was appointed as a career firefighter in 2001, and Don has served the last 16 years in that capacity before his retirement this past Tuesday. Firefighter Gary Almstrom, his last day as a call firefighter with the department will be a couple of weeks from now, on Friday, February 2nd, 2017. He joined the department in 1978 and has served the department and the town of Auburn for 40 years. Gary has given back to the community in so many ways other than his role as a call firefighter. Both of these members have been fixtures within our department and the community for the past four decades, and they will certainly be missed. If you would please join me in recognizing both of these members, who are here with their families tonight in the audience, for their dedicated time and service to the Auburn Fire Rescue Department and the town of Auburn.
Chief? We'll have a couple more.
Gary, thank you. Well done. Donnie, just keep Gary away from the microphone.
So, Mr. Kontois and Mr. Almstrom, I thought about what I would say tonight, and I'm going to leave most of the comments to our members who served with you, but I think about your service to the town. You've seen so much, you've been through so much, you've seen the changes in the department, you've seen, you know, you've served under different chiefs, but you've never forgotten what you're really here for, is to serve the residents of the town of Auburn. I'm so impressed with your professionalism through the changes over the history of the Fire Department, and I sincerely thank you for your service and wish you the best in your retirement. Hope you get the sunshine you need soon, and thank you for everything, not that you've just done for the Auburn Fire Rescue Department, but you're such fixtures and community members. We truly appreciate it.
Madam Chair, just quick to your point, as I've mentioned in the past, in the department's 100-year history, I'm the sixth chief in the organization, and both of these individuals have served for five out of the six chiefs in the organization.
They've handled change with grace and professionalism. So, Mr. Almstrom?
Well done, guys. You did it, and we appreciate all you guys have done. I appreciate what you guys have done. We run into one another in woods and smoky hallways and this and that, and you know what? You'll miss it for a while, but we're going to miss you more, and we appreciate all that you've done. You guys have done a great job.
I just want to, you know, bring to attention that I came on Auburn at the age of 37, so all of these guys had been my friends before I even joined the force, and, you know, they could have easily looked down on myself, there's a new firefighter here, you're here at one of the best departments in the world, because these guys make you feel at home. If you ask them a question, they don't make fun of you because, oh, you should have known that. They're very good about explaining things. Had the privilege of being on shift with Ducky quite a bit when we had the part-time shifts going on, and I was out west and Ducky was on shift with us, and, you know, always, always, always teaching us things. Gary, I didn't, he was on a different call group, so, part-time group, so I didn't get to work necessarily shifts with him, but I did spend a Saturday and Sunday with him on, what's the word for it? Getting cellars unflooded, which was a hell of a fun day, and Gary, Gary made it fun when, you know, you start out at 9:00 in the morning and walk downstairs, and he didn't tell me that there was more stairs under the water. And you take a step and all of a sudden your boots just fill up with water, and there's nothing you can do, but I'm sure he had more laughs that day than I did, but just two great guys to work with, and like I say, just you felt like you're a part of the family as soon as you walked in, and I'm sure you're going to feel that as well, and hopefully you do, and I can't thank these guys enough for their service and for their friendship. Thank you.
Mr. Almstrom?
I don't know what else I can add, but I'd just say that if the department was half as good as Lionel, Mr. Almstrom and the chief have said it is, then Auburn is definitely one of the best in the state, if not the country. So, thank you for your service and for meeting Auburn, what it is, Auburn's department, what it is.
Thank you. And Ms. Jacobson?
I just want to make a note that you are two of the most professional, talented, public safety officials, and from a personal standpoint, it's been an honor to work with you and to get to know you, and want to thank you and your families for all that you've done and the sacrifices that you've made in your personal lives and in your professional lives for this town, for this community, for this department, and for this administration, and I'm honored to have been able to work beside you. I wish you all the luck and all the sunshine.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
All right, I'll keep this short and sweet. I have been on for decades, and I want to thank the town of Auburn for allowing me this. This all started out '76, but in the year 2000, this was my dream. So I asked my wife, when I got the call from Chief Bellima, if I could stop. So I called her, because I was taking a substantial cut in pay to do this, and she said, absolutely, we'll make it work. So Deb was a big part of this, allowing me my dream. The other thing I'd like to say is to the chiefs, Chief Budrow and Chief Bellima now telling Chief White how lucky he was, I, he was the only one that didn't have me. These other five had to put up with me, and believe me, some days were tough, but they all did it, and they all kept me in good spirits, and I do want to say one thing about the town of Auburn and their chiefs. All their chiefs have come up from the ranks, okay? They've all built on each other to where we are today, to probably one of the best chiefs politically and for our department. He's phenomenal, but he built on, you know, Chief Bellima, Chief Budrow, Chief Bellima, Chief Why Not, Chief Murray, to Chief Goman. Did I miss one?
Nope.
Think I got them all. So I just want to say that the department is what it is today due to this town supporting our upper staff too, and our guys, and we're just getting better. So just please keep up the good work and please support them, because they are quite busy every day, all right? So thank you all, and thank you, the town of Auburn, for letting me live my dream.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Donnie.
And Chief, just before you go on, just in compliance with open meeting law, I see we have a representative from the Worcester Telegram and Gazette. Are you making an audio recording tonight? So the Worcester Telegram and Gazette is in compliance with open meeting law. I'm announcing that he's making an audio recording. Thank you. Chief, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair. So with the retirement of firefighter Kontois, this created a vacancy within the career ranks. So I would like to announce tonight the appointment of our newest career member, firefighter EMT Thomas Briggs. Mr. Briggs has 22 years of experience as a firefighter and EMT, serving as both a call firefighter for the town of Sutton and as a full-time firefighter and safety officer at the Worcester Airport. He was most recently a full-time firefighter EMT for the Sutton Fire Department, serving in the rank of lieutenant. He is a graduate of the Career Firefighter Recruit Training Program, Class 151, and holds an associate's degree from Quinn-Sigman Community College. Mr. Briggs holds many other state certifications and is also an active member of the District 7 Technical Rescue Team, where he will remain an active member now with the town of Auburn. It is not often that a department is able to bring on a new firefighter EMT with the level of experience and training that Mr. Briggs has, and we're very excited to have him as a member of our department and our family. So at this time, Madam Chair, I would ask our town clerk, Deb Grimo, to come to the podium so we can deliver the oath of office to Mr. Briggs.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the town of Auburn, to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will support the Constitution of the United States thereof, so help you God? Do you solemnly swear and affirm that you will uphold the full-time duties as a firefighter and EMT for the town of Auburn, and will support the rules and regulations of the Fire Department as determined by the Fire Chief, the town of Auburn, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the best of your ability, with fairness and compassion to all you serve in this community? Okay. Congratulations. Let's have a sound.
Congratulations, Tom.
Congratulations, Bob. Congratulations, Al. Congratulations. No, I just wanted to say...
Madam Chair, I just wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Briggs' family is here as well.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. I didn't know if our newest firefighter wanted to say anything, but he went right back to his seat. So I will say from here, thank you for his, to his family, for your support. I'm sure, as you know, you know, it's impossible to do this job without family support. We welcome you to Auburn. I'll follow up on some of the comments that were said here. You know, we have one of the finest fire departments, it's been said in the Commonwealth and just mentioned in the country. Well, I'm just convinced that it is the best fire department in the country. I follow this department closely. We have the hardest-working fire department. I am so impressed with the camaraderie, the support, the mentorship. Look at this room, how many people are here tonight for this, and I'm honored to be a part of acknowledging retirements, welcoming new members, and acknowledging accomplishments. So it's our privilege to have you all here tonight. Anything?
Your Deputy Chief, Ken Smith, is here tonight too, supporting you, and it's our asset and his loss. We've got a great department here, don't let them scare you away. They didn't scare me away, and, well, sometimes I like to try to anyway, but to Ken Smith, thank you very much for releasing him to us. We appreciate it, but thank you, and thank you for your support.
Does anyone else have anything?
Just like I say, you're welcome to the family and stay safe.
Okay. I will entertain a brief recess so that we can do some photos, we can thank everyone in person. Does anyone else have anything before, anything with the Fire Department before we just take a brief recess?
Do you want to take the donations?
Well, we're going to move that up right after, so...
Move for a recess?
Second.
All those in favor? Five minutes.
10, 15 minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. We can come back. And we still have the chief in attendance with us, so I would request a motion to move up Agenda Items Board of Selectmen 5A and Town Manager Items 6A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So the first item we have are gifts to the Fire Department gift account. The first one we have, which was given to us tonight for our packet, is from the Auburn Sportsman's Club in memory of, these are all, the ones I'm going to read, are all in memory of Dr. Richard Doc Weagle. So it's from the Auburn Sportsman's Club for $50, Elizabeth Peoples for $100, Robin Byland $100, Dr. Bruce Field $100, Linda Carr $100, Barbara and Richard Granger $50, Barbara Carr $40, Terrence and Martha Hastings $35, Marjorie Averka $25, Bruce and Nancy McClellan $25, Deanna and John White $25, John and Elaine Hogan $25, Timothy Baiki $25.
No, it was $50.
I'm sorry, $50. I apologize. Mark Amadon $50, William Tuttle Jr. $50, Mary Anderson $15, Kevin DeLacy $250. Is there a motion?
And also, did you do the Sportsman's Club?
Yeah, I did the Sportsman's Club first.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So as many residents know, Doc Weagle passed away recently. He did so much for the community. He served as Director of the Water Department. He will be sorely missed, and, you know, we truly appreciate the residents recognizing him with these gifts to the Fire Department. Chief, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the Weagle family. I had an opportunity to speak with them, and I thanked them personally, but publicly, I just want to thank them for recognizing, you know, the work of the department. You know, Doc Weagle was a great man. He will be missed, a true gentleman, but I just wanted to thank the Weagle family for directing the donations towards the department. It is much appreciated.
Yes. Thank you. And, can I have that, please? And we have also to the Fire Rescue Department from the Auburn Permanent Firefighter vehicle 4157, in the approximate value of $1,976. It's reclining chairs for Stations 1 and 2, and it's a total of eight chairs. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Chief, if you just wanted to say, give you an opportunity to talk about your new renovations and tie it in with your chairs.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, the DPW this summer, well, actually, they started in the summer, they completed just before Thanksgiving, I believe. They completed a renovation of the second floor at Fire Headquarters, including the bunk rooms and the sitting area. They did an amazing job. I know many of you have had an opportunity to come down and see it. As part of that renovation, the Firefighters Union generously took a vote and donated to purchase the reclining chairs for not only headquarters in the renovation, but to replace the aging ones at Station 2. So I want to thank the Firefighters Union for this generous donation. It is much appreciated.
Thank you, Chief. And then the other item we have is a vote to authorize applications and acceptance of funds for assistance to firefighters' grants. Chief, or Ms. Jacobson, whoever wants to take this one?
I will turn to the chief, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson, Madam Chair. So you did receive some information last week in your packet. As always, annually, I come before you seeking a vote to not only apply for, but if successful, to expend the funds for the assistance to firefight a grant program, which is a FEMA program. This year, we will be applying for a total of three grants. Two of them will be within the department, and the third one, we're participating in a regional grant. The city of Worcester is going to be the lead author. So I'll, again, you have the information. I'll just quickly say what the project is and the dollar amount, and if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy. Madam Chair, this is a point of information. We will require a separate vote for each of the projects.
Okay.
So the first project is applying for new portable radios for the Fire Department. We're seeking 45 portable radios at a value of $7,598.74 each. So the total grant project we're seeking is $341,943.30. It does require a 5% match from the community, which is $17,097.16, leaving the federal government share at $324,846.14. This is an item that is on next year's CIP. This is part of the CIP. So if we're successful in this grant award, our 5% match will come from what is already, that the capital will be amended to basically just require the 5% match.
Do members have any questions on Project 1? I'd like to take them separately.
Sure.
If there are no questions, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Do you...
Project 1, it has to be Project 1 with the numbers.
Okay. Motion to approve Project 1, APCO P-25, which is for the grant for the purchase of 45 portable radios.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, so voted. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Project 2?
Project 2 is to purchase turnout gear, washing machines, and extractors. Again, the number of firefighter cancer cases across the state and the nation is rising. It's something our department has been paying attention to for the last couple of years. As you may remember, we just recently voted to approve a second set of turnout gear for all of our members. All of that equipment has been ordered and in service, so every member now has two sets of protective clothing, which allows us for a better rotation of washing gear when it comes into contaminated smoke or other types of toxic environments, where it was very difficult to do that before with one set, because then it would basically put the member out of service for that period of time. We've also put other provisions in place, little side note, but other provisions in place as part of a new cancer prevention policy that just went into effect on January 1st. And this is another step to be able to equip the department with more up-to-date gear washers and extractors. So the total project cost will be $38,000. Our required match would be $1,900, which leaves the federal government share at $36,100. If successful in this grant, the 5% match would come from the operating budget, the equipment line within our operating budget.
Are there any questions?
I make a motion, we approve the turnout gear washing machine extractor grant. One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Chief?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last project, as I had mentioned, is a regional grant submission. The city of Worcester is the lead author. I believe there's nine other departments that are going to be part of this project. And we're seeking to replace two of our outdated thermal imaging cameras. Total project cost is $20,000. The required 5% match is $1,000, leaving the federal government share at $19,000. Again, if successful in this grant, the 5% match would come from our equipment line item within the operating budget.
Mr. Berthew?
Just a question on, you know, it's two outdated imaging cameras that we're going to replace, but obviously, a town that doesn't have any might be welcome to get something like that. What is our plan for disposing or utilizing the existing two?
Sure, great question, Ms. Berthew. Typically, any of the equipment that we place as surplus property after it's voted by the board is surplus. I reach out to the Fire District 7 first, which is our home district, to see if there's any need. If not, I reach out to 8 and 14, which are our collaborative partners in the central region. And typically, as you had mentioned, a smaller department, you know, they're usually able to pick up some of the things that we end up putting as surplus. So that, like all other pieces of equipment, that could be an option here.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion that we approve this project, the regional grant for Project 3, for the thermal imaging cameras.
Yes. Second? Ms. La Liberty, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there anything else, Chief?
I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight. What a great night for the fire department.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the board's time tonight. I think it's important that you have an opportunity to meet our new employees and see what's going on, so I appreciate you giving us the time.
As stated before, we appreciate the opportunity to participate, so thank you.
Good. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. So if the board would, we have, we have Mr. Coyle here.
I'm afraid.
So could we, I'm going to find it, I'm sorry, Complete Streets. Could we move up Agenda Item 6B, Discussion and Potential Vote, to adopt the town of Auburn Complete Streets program?
So move.
Any discussion of moving the Agenda item up? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Mr. Coyle, if you could come up and join us, please.
Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Coyle to explain this program. But before I do, I just want to say that this is, this is an initiative that the Governor Baker and Plito administration put into play, and to give communities the opportunity to ultimately seek additional funding for various street projects. There's a lot of work involved in getting up to that point, so I just want to acknowledge the work of Bill Coyle and Joanna Paquin, our civil engineer, who have been working for months on this. And Bill's going to explain to you why it's important, what it is, and what the next steps are. But I just want to personally thank them. I know how very difficult this process is. It takes several months for communities to go through it. With everything else on their plate, they still manage to get to this important project. So I'll turn to them.
Thank you, Julie, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me here this evening, and look forward to giving you some information on Complete Streets policy, and answering any questions that you may have as well. But to start with, I just want to also let you know that myself and Joanna Paquin, the other engineer within the DPW, attended several training seminars. Before we got to this point, it was Complete Streets 101 and Complete Streets 201, which is a little more, obviously, advanced training. And essentially, Complete Streets policy, what we look to achieve is to improve the infrastructure of our roadway network, not only for motor vehicles, but also for pedestrians and bicyclists. And essentially, this policy is a commitment by the town to move forward in that direction, and working with the other, the other boards, the Planning Board, Zoning Board, Master Plan Committee, and other departments as well, to make this happen. So this is the beginning of the, of the process. This is what they call the TO1 of the Complete Streets Funding Program, for the board to accept the policy, to move forward. If accepted by the board, we would then submit this policy to the Mass DOT for review. If we receive a score of 80 or higher, we would then be eligible for funding to develop a prioritization plan. That funding would be up to $50,000. Once the prioritization plan is developed, we could then move forward with identifying what our priorities are, selected projects, what the cost of those projects would be, and then apply for construction projects. And those, those grants are up to $400,000 per community. So we're very excited to start this process, and we look forward to seeing it move forward. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Bill, thanks for being here tonight. My email to the office was to thank you for being proactive in this program, and I think it's going to be a great thing. I do have a question, and we've been approached several times over the past of a particular street on Park and Drug Hill where, well, they have a problem with traffic up there. Will this here be able to help us with any special projects, such as that, to make corrections and to help some of our residents along?
Good question. During the prioritization plan, when we are working to develop that plan, we can look at what types of projects beyond roadway or widens for bicycle accommodations, or sidewalks and wheelchair ramps. If something to that nature would be eligible, certainly, we would take that under consideration and move it forward if it's eligible.
Okay. And if I may, through the chair.
Yes, Ms. La Liberty.
We do still have several roads that have not been accepted in town, and they've been here for years, we haven't done anything with them. And I know that some of the residents, well, they pay their taxes also, and is there any way, how did this project can handle going through and getting them approved, so we can get acceptances for those streets?
This probably wouldn't be used for that purpose. I can say, though, that over the past five, six, seven years, we have accepted many roads that, for 30, 40 years, that were private, for whatever reason, had never been accepted. And we have moved forward to accept, accept those roads. Most of those roads have been roads that were designed through the planning board process, and what was missing was the final stages of acceptance. And if you had moved into that house 30 years ago, you would have never known it wasn't a town road, which is different than the gravel roads. That would not be the type of roads, those are basically private roads.
Right.
Unless there's some sort of betterment program where the residents would improve the roadway, those would remain private. So this funding probably wouldn't be used for that purpose, but I can tell you, we've made a lot of progress on acceptance. Most of those roads, there are probably still a handful remaining, and we try to address those and move those forward as time allows.
Yeah, the town has been very good about trying to identify those and working with the residents as best we can, but I do appreciate all your work and all your time. This is definitely a comprehensive program, and I think this policy is going to work out great for us, especially where there may be issues that'll come up over the course of time, saying, well, we'll go back and look at our policy, and maybe we can help ourselves out here. It's a great thing, and I thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Berthew?
Through the chair. I know that we've, we're in the middle, right, of a multi-year, you going out and checking out the roads and improving the roads and, you know, picking the worst roads and things like that. Does this now envelope into that? Or how does that, is that like, it's still a multi-year project, and this is going to be in addition to that? Just wonder where.
I think the projects that are chosen from the prioritization plan could move separately. It could be part of existing projects that we have ongoing. I think the implementation of this policy, things as simple as if we have a roadway that's 28 feet wide, and currently, they may have 12-foot shoulders striped and leaving limited shoulders, we could re-stripe those shoulders for maybe an 11-foot lane, which is an acceptable lane with wider shoulders. So it's just, it's some of the items that you could move forward are relatively simple, that even with projects that we've already have out to bid and will be under construction in the spring, we could look at making changes such as that. And then additional signage, you know, share the road. If there isn't sufficient space for bicyclists and is lack of right-of-way, it's something as simple as signage can help also improve the situation. Wheelchair ramps, we try to accommodate those currently, but anything that's lacking, we certainly would move forward. So it's, we can do some things concurrently, but we will identify specific projects, I think, in this prioritization plan as well.
Thank you very much for your time and doing this, it's great.
Thank you.
So I just want to say I had the opportunity to attend the Mass Municipal Association annual meeting, and Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Plito spoke at the annual meeting. And this is one of their initiatives that they highlighted. And I also congratulate you on being, once again, ahead of the curve, proactive. I would absolutely believe there were many in the room who were just hearing about this Complete Streets initiative for the first time, and we're going to be in there with a plan filed, that we're, you know, have a great opportunity to, to be first in line for this grant money. And it just seems that, you know, whatever's offered out there, the town of Auburn, town administration, the department heads are right on top of this, to apply for these grants, not just to throw an application out, but for the research, for the time it goes into it, and for a complete application. And it just shows through the grant money where we've been receiving. So I thank you for that, once again, for being ahead of this in a program that they just highlighted on Saturday, and I knew this, it was on my agenda Monday, knowing that we are already ahead of so many communities. So thank you for your hard work, Bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson, did you want to add anything?
We will keep you apprised of this as we move forward. Again, it's a great opportunity, and I'd also want to comment to Selectmen Berthew's comments about our overall roadway improvement project. That's another great, successful program. It is a multi-year. It's been highlighted as a best practice by many in the state for looking ahead to, out to 20 years, to see how we're going to maintain and reconstruct our roadway system. And we are one of the fewer communities in the Commonwealth that have actually been allocating dollars in the operational budget on an annual basis to augment the funds that we receive from the state. And we are, we will continue to do that. That is our plan, to continue to provide those funding toward that, and dovetail this in wherever it fits with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Madam Chair, it says Discussion and Potential Vote to Adopt the Town of Auburn Complete Streets Program Policy.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
On that note, I would make the motion to adopt the town of Auburn Complete Streets Program Policy, and put this in place as soon as we possibly can. This is a great program, and I think that we go forward with it. I think it'll be just that much sooner than we'll help ourselves out.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Ms. La Liberty, Sharon, you have the motion, correct? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Thank you very much. If you would kindly just sign here, I don't know if you can.
Could I sign? I'll sign after the meeting, so I can take this off.
Madam Chair, just.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Just as a point of order, Item 4, under Communications, we have none. I just wanted to, just for the record, that we don't have any communications, in case somebody sent something in.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go back and check the Agenda now, so. So we've gone through public comment, presentations, communications, we have none. Board of Selectment items, we've done gift acceptance, there are no proclamations. On the Agenda tonight, we have an update from the Subcommittee on Residents' Remote Participation and Board Meetings. I know that Mr. Berthew and Mr. La Liberty have worked on this. You know, it was my intent to not have a vote on this, at least until all five members were here. So it's up to you whether you want to give us an update tonight. Mr. Carpenter unexpectedly, obviously, is not available. Would you want to hold this item, to present it to all five board members?
We're unable, you want to just?
I mean, we're not, we're not going to vote on it tonight without all five members, because it affects all five members. So it's, do you wish to do your presentation tonight? Do you want to hold it to the next meeting?
We can just update you really quickly, because we don't.
Sure.
Okay. So we are just looking into, for the live-streaming portion of what we're doing. I'll just stick to that. So we did get some equipment to look into what it would look like if you livestreamed the meetings, so I'll just pass that around. We, our plan as of right now is to record the next meeting, if it is all right with everyone, and I'll, I'll check with Mr. Carpenter. So this is what we'll be using. And the plan is, again.
I can see it, it's a tripod.
Record the meetings, next meeting, and everyone will get a chance to, once it's finished, see how the meeting looks, and then from there, we'll take a vote on to whether or not we want to livestream. What Lionel and I have done is taken all this and set it up around the room. We've livestreamed from my personal Facebook account to see how it would look, to make sure that you could hear from around the room, and that was with the microphones off. So our next step would be to just record it, not livestream it. In the corner there is a spot that we picked out where everything would be visible. And then from there, if everyone's in agreement that they like the quality of it, go with a vote from there. So that's just a quick update on.
Mr. Berthew?
So just, just so, you know, to reiterate what Tristan said, is, we don't, we kind of want you guys to see what it's going to appear like before you go and take a vote, like, yeah, this is, this is something that we would consider to do the test livestream. So when we say record, there's a tablet here that we would use, that has nothing on it. We would get, you know, make sure that it was okay with the town. You could even record just a few minutes of the next meeting or whatever. I don't know if we need a vote in order to even do that, or if that's something that we just need approval of the town to, to say that we are recording this meeting, like the media would. So I guess I'll, I'll look to you for advice on that, whether we should try that, or whether you want to wait for us to do it, to have the full board to approve that portion of it.
Mr. Holstrom?
Question through the chair. Is there a legal issue or any laws that we would have to meet, or has that been looked into about the legal issue of doing this type of thing? I'm not familiar enough with that social media aspect of it, that what we can do with it. So I just, I guess I'll ask that question through you, see if there was any.
I'll answer part of it, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Jacobson to see if she has any additional information. So certainly, there would, there would be some questions that would have to go to the Attorney General's Office, open meeting law. One of, again, at the, and I think you attended one, I read some information, we were in separate areas at the MMA conference, but one of the issues that they're addressing right now is archiving this, because this now becomes part of the public record. So now it's, anytime you use any kind of social media, it's how you archive it. So I think that's one of the questions that's been raised. I'll let Ms. Jacobson add some additional, well, why don't I have you add to that now, because I have a couple of questions.
So this, we were at a MMA conference over the weekend, Friday and Saturday, and there were several sessions that I attended. were several sessions that I attended, as well as the chair, related to use of social media by town employees, as well as Boarding Commission members and volunteers. And the, the simple answer is that the law has not caught up with technology. And that's what the message we kept hearing from the attorneys who were participating. There are, technology has moved so quickly that a lot of the laws have not been updated to catch up to all the nuances of what happens with social media equipment. That being said, whenever a social media platform is being used, it's always advised to have a written policy for how it is used, who uses it, who's authorized. And then decisions have to be made as to whether to allow comments to be posted, not to be posted, who monitors the site, do you allow for dialogue and discussion, or do you use, several communities use sites. I haven't seen any quite that use Facebook, they may. I've just come across some that use YouTube or their own cable television and they funnel it through there. And they have the ability to, I guess the word would be block comments because if a comment's made, everybody is required to see it in an open meeting. And if it's being made on a Facebook page and the rest of you don't see it, then there could potentially be a concern there. So that comment, that subject did come up. We'd have to look into it. We didn't look into it any further because we were anticipating the Subcommittee doing a lot of research on this and just coming back with, just at this point, I think, the logistics of how to do it. How does it work? How do you plug it in? So a lot of other questions would come up depending on what the board wants to do moving forward, that we're happy to help.
Mr. Berthew?
I'm going to let Tristan, Tristan did reach out to the, what was it?
Attorney General.
Attorney General's Office. But just so that, I want to make it clear that we would do, we would like to do this. If it, if it's going to happen, we're going to do it in very small baby steps. So the, the idea of what we were first thought of was, you know, the recording, which basically is going to simulate a live stream. By live stream, we mean that it might go out over Facebook. We actually heard from the audience at our Subcommittee meeting that there might actually, there's, there's other means, not just YouTube and Facebook, but there's other products out there. And we have to, because we just had the meeting recently, we haven't researched all that. But we want to research that because I think initially, our baby step would be, we wouldn't allow any comments or anything. So it would just be strictly what, what our local channel is showing. They'd see a version of that through, through the internet. So it's, I think it's a long and ongoing process and we definitely need to, you know, continue to talk with the Attorney General. But I'll, I'll let Tristan explain what he heard through the Attorney General's Office and then we can kind of go from there.
Okay, just, if you don't mind, just, just while I'm fresh on what Mr. Berthew just said. And I appreciate the clarification because one of my concerns was just how it's listed, you know, residents' remote participation in board meetings, which, which is distinctly different than live streaming the meeting. You know, I think if we have an, you know, we can acknowledge, not everyone has local access television, not everyone has access to 193. I think it would be a great, I think it would be wonderful if people had an opportunity to see the meetings live, you know, if they have the dish, if they just use, you know, a tablet or whatever. I'm fully in support of that. I just, I have some concerns and questions about the remote participation. Who will monitor it? Who, if a question comes in, if, you know, if it's not on the agenda, it has to meet the open meeting law requirements. I, I agree with you. I, I'm glad that you're looking at taking this in baby steps and I, you know, I have no issues at all with a remote feed live on Facebook that would just be like cable TV. Thank you for the opportunity to say that. And Ms. La Liberty, do you have something else to add?
Yeah, I'll just clarify on that first. We do have the, we're looking at those two separate issues. And this is the first one that we decided to bring to you guys first because it was almost ready to go just with live streaming. There's not that much required on our end that we saw. We are looking into actually having remote participation from the community, but we're still looking into that and we're not ready to report back on that yet, that aspect yet. So this is just live streaming. What we are looking into now is trying to see if we can block comments for the first time we livestream, or something like, to be able to just show the video on Facebook. It's still iffy on whether or not we'll be able to do that. I haven't found a way yet. But again, this would just, just be focusing on live stream. The camera, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead. I was just getting ready to ask a question.
With the Attorney General's Office, I called, it was a while ago, I think it was in the early fall, actually, that I called them. But that was just looking into the actual taking of comments and questions and what their advice was on that. I did mention live streaming and they didn't see a problem there with open meeting law on the spot. I didn't ask specifically about archiving the videos. So I will give them a call back and then check directly with that and then see if there's a way that we could save it somehow. I know that you can save the videos once they're finished. We found that out when we tried live streaming ourselves. So I'll definitely check into that, but.
So my question would be, would this be live streaming? I know, and I saw it, or heard it, I should say, on your Facebook page. With this, we, it's the Auburn Board of Selectmen. What is your intention? Where would be, whose Facebook page will it be live streamed from? Will it be live streamed from yours? Are we going to create an Auburn Board of Selectmen Facebook page specifically for live, live streaming? And when it's created, that's the time you can determine whether you can block comments and whatever. So what's, what's your thought on that?
So the Auburn Town has our own Facebook page.
Yes.
And this was originally set up by Mike Morano to use that, that, so it was set up to that account on Facebook. He helped me download the app and get it all set up through that account. Then when Lionel and I were testing it, we didn't want to test it on the town's account. So we logged off and logged onto my account, which is why everything was tested on there. But our plan was to have it livestream directly from the town's Facebook account.
To the chair, I can add, if, if that's the case, we do have a software system that archives on our Facebook. We purchased it a couple of years ago in accordance with the open meeting law. So if it was done through the town's official site, we do have a mechanism for retaining records on that site.
And to forgive my ignorance, but I'm.
Let me say, I say we have a record of retaining comments and records. I would have to find out about the video aspect of it. I'm assuming that if we can retain the comments, we can retain the video.
And so who would, would it be one of you who sets this up under the town account at the start of the meeting and start when we're called to order? How would that happen?
We kind of, we're, we're looking at some different possibilities there. One is, there's a, I reached out to Mr. Bergman, who is a teacher and audiovisual kind of guru at the high school, to, to help us out with that. And we, Tristan also reached out to the teacher at the high school that is in government?
The AP Government.
AP Government.
Spencer Card.
To see if maybe we, we might want to get some participation with the government students to come in and they would, you know, work with them and they would be assigned to, to that. So again, we don't have the exact how we're going to do it, but these are some of the thoughts that, that have come across, the ideas that Tristan and I have come up with to, you know, it's certainly easy enough to, to set up a small table. We set it up over on the side there and one of the two of us could easily do it. But we're trying to see if there might be some benefit to, you know, the students or, you know, other people in the town to, to get actively involved in it as well.
I could just add to that. With the tripod and everything that we've gotten with this, yeah, it's pretty much, from what I've seen, just pressing the livestream, getting it set at the right angle and then it'll immediately start. The one problem with that is that if we're all up here when the meeting's called to order, it would be 20 seconds that they'll have from someone pressing the start and then coming up here to start the meeting. So if worse comes to worse and a student doesn't, we don't find anyone that wants to sit there with it, we, we can always do that.
Okay. So the request tonight is to livestream our next meeting with no comments?
To.
Yeah. So next meeting, all we're planning to do is to set this up with the tripod in back, around that corner and just use the camera that's on this.
Okay.
To film the meeting. And that would just be on this device, just a recording of the meeting. From there, it would, it would look the same because it's still using this camera, this microphone. So we would get a recording of the meeting from everyone here. We could send it out and that's what it would look like livestreamed to Facebook, only it would just be visible to whoever had, had this, access to this. And we would send it out to everyone. And depending on the quality of that and what everyone's thoughts were at that point, we would ask for a vote to livestream.
Okay.
Everyone, everyone being the board, not like it.
Right, right.
It's not going to be available to the public at all.
Right. Okay.
Well, I'd make the motion to, let's put it in motion and see what happens. So I mean, if we're just doing hardware to see how the equipment works, we still have an issue of some questions, we can get those done. But if we get the hardware put in place and it's a matter of going through the legal literature and it knows answers, so I'd be for that. So I will make that motion to, let's try it. Thank you.
So the motion is to, to videotape live the meeting for playback for members to see before livestream?
Right.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, so I'll just, I know you guys are meeting regularly and working on that. And just to follow up on what we heard at the MMA conference, we're certainly going to be looking, I'll be looking as chairman to develop a written policy for any use of Facebook Live. It was recommended by all, all the attorneys who were there at the MMA annual meeting. So I'd like to see some policy developed. We can have more further discussion once we see it and see if this is something that we're going to move forward with, but just to keep in the back of your minds as a Subcommittee. Mr. Berthew?
Question for you. You, you just mentioned that we set up a policy to use Facebook Live. One of the things that we want to look into, I haven't gotten a chance yet, was there somebody that was kind of a guru at that meeting that we would be able to get their name on Facebook Live? Because one of the things that we noticed when we did our little trial was that, like, you know how you do the like and you, you know, the happy face emojis and things like that and they, they shoot across the screen? What we found was the user on the other hand has the ability to swipe and, and clear that out, but we, but we didn't see that we had the ability to not allow it. And so if you, if there's anybody that we could reach out to.
Yeah, I can go through the paperwork that I have from there. I, I don't want to say that there were gurus on actually Facebook Live. I think it was more on the law and, you know, open meeting and guidance in that format.
And we'll continue.
Correct, it was more, it was, to correct, it was more, there were, I moderated one panel and there were two attorneys and a town manager and they were really talking about social media policies for Boarding Commission members, as well as employees, on using non-municipal sites as an employee and as a, as a Boarding Commission member. That was one panel. The previous day was talking about just the archiving and the legal aspects and the First Amendment aspects of utilizing social, all social media sites. They're really, I don't recall any specific discussions to live streaming.
But I'll bet, I'll bet just having a conversation, there's someone who's, you know, a Facebook fanatic out there and I'm not your person. I barely get through my own Facebook. So thank you guys for the work on that and we look forward to the next report.
If I may just add in, and I'll, I'll send this to you, but we, in our office, we were doing a little bit of research and it's not pulled together yet, but in our office we looked into 12 municipalities that we could find that offered livestream. And we didn't find any that used Facebook. We did find that they used a couple of internal systems and they also used YouTube. And then there were a couple of systems that you could purchase to use. It was our understanding that they, a couple of them had mentioned that they didn't use the Facebook because they couldn't find a mechanism for blocking that public discourse, the public comment and the public dialogue that actually then runs into your, your open meeting law issues. So they were looking at other products and other platforms. I'm happy to send this to you to show you what we came up with.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks for your work on this so far. So the next item is a discussion on the January 29th Board of Selectmen meeting. It is the fifth Monday of the month. It's my understanding that there has been no requests, no applications for public hearings. Does that still stand, Sharon? And we have no items that have come in?
Nothing that would have an immediate need.
Yeah, so.
If there was, we would let you know, but at this point, it's only a week away, so.
Yeah, it's a week away and we don't, there, there's nothing. And if anything came in tomorrow, it would be too late to advertise it for that meeting. So, but it is our policy to meet on the fifth Monday of the month. So it's up to board members if someone wants to make a motion to not hold the January 29th.
I make a motion, we don't hold the 29th meeting and our next meeting be the, whatever is it, February.
Second Monday of February. Is it, is there any discussion on this? Everyone's good with this?
February 12th.
February 12th.
12th, okay, thank you.
No discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So now we're moving on to town manager items. We've taken care of A. We've taken care of B. Now we're moving on to agenda item C, which is the potential vote to adopt proposed Chapter 61, 61A, 61E, excuse me, B process and policy. Ms. Jacobson, I know you've done yeoman's work on this and thank you.
Thank you very much. I did present this to the board at its last meeting and there were three members in attendance at that meeting. So we, my intent at the time was not to seek a vote because I just wanted to get the information to you so you had a couple of weeks to absorb it and ask any questions. I haven't received any questions from anyone yet, so I'm assuming everything's pretty clear. We do have to follow Chapter 61 with regard to all processes and procedures. This really just adds a couple of different layers on to it to enhance communications to the boards and commissions in this town, as well as to the residents and the potential abutters of such potential properties for sale, whether it be a 61A agriculture or 61B forestry. So this does follow the law. It also includes some, I would call them, extra steps to make sure that we're circulating the information above and beyond what the law requires because I think it's important to get an even broader look at this. We also tried to make it clear for future boards, as well as administrators, so they understand what the process is. So we did create a checklist with all the different steps and we did it for two different aspects of the, of the law. Number one would be a Chapter 61 intent to sell, which is what we experienced with the Southfield Road parcel back in 2014. That was an intent to sell, which gives the town the right of first refusal. The second mechanism that the Board of Selectmen has a vote in would be the intent to convert. And that would be if someone owned a 61A or 61B land that had been so classified for agriculture or forestry and they wanted to convert it to a residential, commercial, or industrial use, they still have to go through the same notification process to this board and follow the law. But they are two different processes. The processes are the same, but the difference being the intent to convert would require that the municipality get an appraisal on the property to determine the value. Whereas the intent to sell, you're provided with a purchase and sales agreement that's already been executed and the value is what's been executed in the purchase and sale. That's really the only difference. So there was a checklist here for both, an overview of the description of what we want to accomplish. And just as an update, I did speak with Senator Moore's office and they did refile the bill again. And I'm asking them to expand the scope of the amendment, not just to Chapter 61A, which is what we originally looked at because it was agricultural land, but also to Chapter 61B. To me, it makes sense, if you're going to look at Chapter 61 and make some much-needed adjustments, that you should look at the entire chapter, not just one section. adjustments, that you should look at the entire chapter, not just one section of the chapter. So the senator is looking at that, and his staff has been great and said that they were gonna run that by him. So what you have before you is a policy. The reason it comes to the board, and I'm recommending the board vote to adopt it as your policy, is because under Mass General Law, the board is the one that takes the vote whether or not to exercise, waive, or sign your right of first refusal under 61A. Obviously, or you still need, in certain cases, you're gonna need town meeting approval, you're gonna need other types of approvals, but the board is the one that actually takes that vote. So in the communities that we researched, and we researched several, I'm gonna say we maybe looked at 25 different communities, the boards of selectmen always adopted the policy as their policy. And this, again, would help guide future selectmen, boards of selectmen, if you have any new members, or, you know, 10 years from now, if you have all new members, it gives them a boilerplate on how to proceed. We would, once it's adopted, we'll keep our eye on it. If things change in the law, we go back and bring back to you recommended revisions with timelines. But right now, this mirrors the current law.
Thank you. And I just want to comment on something that you just said. She's been working closely with Senator Moore's office, and as people know, I am a staff member of Senator Moore's office. But when the town manager contacts the office regarding any legislation or anything like this, she works directly with the Legislative Director and the Senators' Council. I don't receive any of these communications. I don't handle any of the calls. And the office is very careful to make sure that I am not involved in any of this so that I get this information at the same time all of you do. And I just thought that was important to mention. So you deal with the Senators' Council and the...
I do. I deal with the Labor Council, excuse me, Legal Council, as well as occasionally as Chief of Staff, and there's one other gentleman there that does legislative...
Legislative Director, yep.
Thank you. Well, I'll make the motion to adopt the proposed Town of Auburn lands policy and process, Mass General Law, Chapter 61, 61A, or 61B land.
I'll second if a discussion.
Okay, there's a second for discussion. Mr. Bertheum, did you have a question?
I just didn't know if we should, I don't think there's much backlash to it, but to allow Dan to have, see if he has any questions or input for it before we actually approve I'm just not sure if that's, we should wait on that. I have no problem with it myself.
Did you have any communications with this?
It's totally up to the board. I did, at the last meeting, ask anyone to get back to me before this meeting if you had any questions or concerns, and I haven't received any. I did receive, I believe it was an email from Dan saying, "Nice job on what you presented." I don't know if it was this or, or, there were several items that night. But he did not respond with any questions or concerns with regard to this. Quite honestly, there is no, there's no rush in getting it done tonight. If you want to wait until February, that would be the next meeting. I don't see the concern with that, as long as it's out there as a draft, and it's completely up to you. But I did not receive any questions from any of the board members on any part of it.
So we're in the discussion, Mr. Holstrom. It was your motion. Do we want to wait till we have a full board?
No, I want to stay with the motion. I think that we put a policy in place and put it there as soon as possible because if something comes up tomorrow, we're gonna have to have something in place for us to work on. And as the town manager noted, that if there are any changes come up on the state side with the changes in that portion of their, the law, then she's gonna bring it to us. So I think with what we have here, I think in protection of the town, I think we should have a policy in place. And I think after a couple of weeks, if there's been no questions, we go forward with it, and let's vote it.
So I wasn't at the last meeting. I had just had surgery, but Mr. Carpenter was here, so I don't know what the discussion was, so... Mr. Bertheum, go ahead.
Madam Chair, you know, based on what the town manager said and, you know, Dan reaching out and, Mr. Carpenter, sorry, reaching out and, you know, saying that, on not saying anything bad about it, I think we can go ahead and continue with our vote.
Okay. I never have an issue holding an item, so all five members can vote on it, but if we're comfortable that it's been discussed at two meetings here, then if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Through the chair, I just want to, if I may just add, I just wanted to check, because I want to make sure I quote him appropriately. He just said, "Also appreciate your items discussed on Monday night." So that was his comment. No other, no questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the next item is Department of Fire Services Best Value Grant. Ms. Jacobson?
This is a grant that, it comes from the Department of Fire Services, but it actually provides funding to the police department as the agent of this, of this particular vendor contract to provide homemade explosives training. And basically, Officer Jimmy Lungren was selected by the state to provide this training. He is very experienced, has done this in several different instances, and will be putting on classes in the homemade explosive training for the Department of Fire Services. This grant is to reimburse the Town of Auburn for the backfill of any overtime needed while he is in these classes training. So this is to make the town whole so that he can participate as a trainer in these classes.
Mr. Holstrom?
I think this is definitely a worthwhile venture. My brother, who is a Sturgis firefighter, is also an investigator for that department and some of the area departments. And talking with him, it sounds like this homemade explosive device is, it's closer than we think. There's a lot of this going on, and if we can get the training out there and make people aware, and I think it's definitely a worthwhile venture to get involved with. So I would make the motion to authorize and accept the grant funds in the grant amount being no greater than $5,691.89.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Do you have anything else, Ms. Jacobson?
I do not.
Okay. There are no tabled items. There are no Board of Selectmen member items. Is there any public comments? Seeing none. We have the minutes of January 8th, 2018. Are there any corrections or omissions? The chair will accept them as written. Is there a motion?
So moved. Most adjourned.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. You're welcome.